Call the meeting to order. So good to see everybody out here this evening, really appreciate that. Let's do our call to order, please.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
President.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you again for coming out this evening. This is, meeting was really called by Councilman Hartman who, you know, really, really wanted to take this time to really kind of re, kind of refresh and get new ideas, new understandings for the rural lifestyle that we all enjoy. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bob. This is really your meeting, so thank you for doing it, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what we all have in common up here is we've also all really strongly campaigned on the concept of keeping us rural. When I ran four years ago, that was the mainstay of my campaign. When I ran again, this time, it's the same thing. Because what I learned the first time, and was reinforced this time, is everybody you talk to out here, everybody who lives in Southwest Ranches, more or less is here for the same reason. They like our lifestyle. Everybody likes the open spaces, they like the animals, they like the large lots, you know, they like the rural environment that we're preserving the best we can. So, what, what really got me going on, or inspired me to do something like this, is about three days before Election Day, somebody sends me an email, and I got hundreds of them throughout the campaign, ideas, you know, asking me questions, what do I, how do I stand? But, one guy hit me with a question that I just couldn't give him the right answer, and that's, "So what's your plan to keep us rural?" I'm a project manager, I live by plans, but it's not a plan I could put together myself to say, "We're going to do these things." Because first off, if I'm wrong, I'm messing up the town. The other part of it is, is four other people up here who have a big say in what that plan is, and have to buy into it. So I thought, well, why don't we bring in the residents, talk to, talk to the community to find out what people's thoughts are, to find out what, what really people feel strongly about, and we'll listen. We'll spend the night listening tonight. And then, what I thought we would do then, from there, is, you know, if, if we get 20 great ideas, we're not going to get 20 great ideas done probably the next year. So we'll come up with, maybe this year, our top five from that same list, maybe next year, our top five, and, and work through it in, in bytes, versus trying to, to try to conquer the whole thing all at once. So, the basic idea here is, you know, not to come up with a plan tonight, but to get your input on what you folks think rural means, what you'd like to see, some ideas that you may have. Because there was some other interesting things that went on. I, I spent a lot of time meeting people up at the farmer's market on Saturdays, and it was kind of interesting, because I have my idea of what rural is. I mean, we've got, we've got a chicken farm. I've got one guy on my street that has a horseback riding business. You can, you know, rent horses there and go out with his guides and ride along Griffin Road. So his idea of rural is lots of horses. I've got other neighbors that have all kinds of animals. We've got emus on our street, we've got lots of goats and sheeps, and we actually have some zebus across the street, which are the miniature cows. So there's a little bit of everything, and when I talk to my neighbors, I get one idea. Then I was over at the, again, the farmer's market, and I said to a guy who was part of my, my conversation with people to find out a little bit about them, "What do you like about Southwest Ranches? Rural. What does rural mean to you?" Well, it's, it's kind of interesting, because rural, "Ah, we have horses, that's rural, that's, that's for us." Then, I talked to somebody who had just bought a house in Sunshine Ranches, big house, and one of the features that he really liked about his big house was that it had enough parking for 10 cars. He collects cars. So, you know, when I moved onto my street, and this, we still have a number of them, we were a dirt road. That's pretty rural. When I go out in the Everglades, I see a lot of dirt roads that are pretty darn rural. When I go up into the agricultural area, there's a lot of dirt roads, that's pretty rural. For this guy, who had two Lamborghinis, a Maserati, a Ducati, and also a collection of motorcycles, he don't want no dirt roads, that's not his idea of rural. His idea of rural was open spaces. He likes the fact that he's got a five acre yard, and when his kids are playing in the backyard, he doesn't have to worry about them whatsoever, because they never wander out of the yard. So, you know, for him, the rural is the open spaces. So, in talking to people over the time period, and just also, just talking to neighbors now, I, I was trying to get some ideas just to prime the pump, because I'd hate to have a meeting like this, bring everybody out, and I'd say, "So what are your ideas?", and nobody gets up to the lectern and has anything to say. So, I figured, well, let me throw some ideas out, and it's up to you guys to chew on those, come up with your own, make things better. We've already thrown out, when I brought this topic up at a council meeting, two council meetings ago, I believe it was, you know, one idea on this is, you know, what financial incentives can we give people to keep their properties rural? I mean, what, what ideas are there? And I, I thought, that's a good start. Well, immediately, the next ma, meeting, the mayor had an idea to offer rebates on barns that are used for ag purposes, like, you know, storing farm equipment, not, not the Maseratis, but farm equipment, and, you know, or if you've got livestock, I mean, that's chickens and cows, and whatever, whatever kind of livestock you keep. So, we'll, we'll work through that at future council meetings, but I thought that was a great idea. Let's, let's figure out how we can do a rebate for those folks who are maintaining the lifestyle and living it, and, you know, how can we incent them to keep it up? Because I know just from my chickens, they cost a lot to feed every year. So, just the ideas that I've heard, and again, these are just ideas to throw out there. You know, should we incent people to have animals? And I'm talking about livestock, I'm not talking about kitty cats and puppy dogs. You know, and as I said, Steve came up with the idea of, well, if it's a non-ag property, in other words, it doesn't have an ag exemption, do we want to provide a grant after the taxes have been paid on the property, or, you know, a rebate on the property after it's been inspected that they're actually keeping their animals in there, and, you know, not just on the day of the inspection? Should we put up more horse trail signs and hitching posts around town? I know on Griffin Road, the hitching posts go all the way out to probably into the 190s or the, the 200s. Do we want to put any of those around our parks? So that when people come in, they can, I know we've got some holding pens in some of our parks, but what else can we do to enhance that? Do they have to be on the parks? Can they be in the right-of-way, the town's right-of-way on some of the intersections where we know people ride horses? Some other things here. So we have a lot of new developments coming in, we probably only have a limited amount of space for big developments, but should we put rural sign standards? The town has got a sign standard. Should we make sure that if they're going to build a subdivision over here on the church property, you know, should their signage match the town's requirements, so it doesn't look like a Walmart sign that's lit up? You know, so we keep it, so it looks, it has a rural character to it. Some of the other ideas, you know, we're, we do have a dark skies ordinance in town, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of that. You can't put streetlights all over your property, we don't have streetlights in our town, other than these little gooseneck ones that are on Griffin Road. You know, should we increase the limits? Because I'll tell you this, when I first moved out here almost 30 years ago, the streets didn't have a lot of houses on them, they were, you know, we were nowhere near as developed as we are today, and you could definitely see the stars without any problems. Now, of course, we get light pollution from all around us, but I live way out west, and you don't see the stars like you used to anymore. And I have a neighbor that, as soon as they, they were definitely city people, they moved in, they put lights all over their property. The neighbors called the town because they were violating our, our lighting ordinance, they pointed everything down, but we still have a ton of light pollution, and they're complying with the law. So, what do we do about those sorts of things? Is that important to people, that we continue to have our dark skies, that, you know, our neighborhoods are, are dark? There's another thing that was brought up to me today, and I'm not sure how many people have seen this. If you go into Hollywood, like, on the east side, a lot of people are putting these big LED signs on with their street number, you know, their house address number. Where, they're starting to pop up in our town now, too. And I found out about it without even thinking about it, the other night, I was driving, and I won't name, name the neighborhood, but I was driving through one of the neighborhoods, and all of a sudden, just a blob of light hit me from the right side, and kind of knocked out my night vision for a little bit. And what I realized, when this person brought it up to me today, is a lot of people out on their signposts, on their mailboxes, are putting these very, very bright LED lights that, you know, show their numbers. I don't know if it's a good or a bad thing. It took out my night vision for a minute there, but I didn't have a car accident. But, it doesn't go with our dark skies concept, doesn't keep our, our neighborhoods dark in the evenings, it really, I mean, it was kind of lighting up the street. Just some ideas. Do we want to change some of our road designs? Do we want deeper setbacks on some of our undeveloped property? And what I mean by that is, I think our, our front setbacks are 50 feet for, for structures? So, if the houses are 50 feet from the road, you don't really have a big open front yard on the property. We all have generally, you know, an acre or more. When the houses are set a little further back from the road, it looks like a larger neighborhood, the, the properties look larger, just an idea. I don't know if it's a good one or a bad one, but I heard that from somebody. Let's, let's change our road designs and our setbacks, so that we have more open space in the front of the yards, it makes the yards look larger, it, it gives it a different look and feel. Some places in town, like, we put a pond in front of our house, so we're set back about 100 feet from the road. My house looks a lot different than the two neighbors that are up close compared to mine. I mean, one is only, he's right at about 55 feet, and if you look at his property when you're driving past, and you hit mine, there's a house back there somewhere. You know, it, it makes our area look far more open when the homes are back off the road. Let's see. We can also work with lot sizes and zoning, although that's very controversial. We, we had some conversations this year about a new zoning category called Rural Ran, Rural Ranches Plus. I'm not sure if that's something we want to pursue any further, and with some other ideas, and then, that's, that's the feedback I've gotten from people so far. So, what have we done so far? So I've been on the council now for four years. Over that timeframe, let me just talk to you about some of the things that the council has done to try to keep us rural. One of the first things that was done was to change our zoning in town. If you look at the Masters Academy lot down here, you, one group came in here and they wanted to put, what was it, 40 lots or so? On one acre lots. They were, they wanted to change the zoning from community facilities, which is what it is today, to one acre zoning. So how do you think the people in Sunshine Ranches, on, what is that, East Palomino, felt about having three houses across the back of their properties? Instead of one house matching theirs, basically two and a half acre zoning, the density went cra, would go crazy doing that. You know, you're, you're adding about two and a half times as many houses as if we had two and a half acre zoning. Now, I can tell you what it's like, because my backyard is up against Pembroke Pines, I'm on A1, so, you know, we're, we're on three acre, just under three acres, and I have three houses behind mine. And one of them, on Saturday nights, does karaoke all the time. I'm starting to sing along with them, because it's that loud in my backyard, and I'm not one to call the police on them, or, you know, start trying to get them in trouble. I got a guy right behind me, you wouldn't know anybody who lives there. I got a new family that moved in that have four little kids. I had little kids, I remember how they used to scream, "Well, those kids are screaming my, like my little ones did." But the problem is, that since they're all on builder's acres, they're not even on one acre lots, since they're all on builder's acres, they're right in my backyard, they're very close. So what this has done, is it stopped developers from coming in and basically converting large lots into one acre zoning. So, the way the new law reads is, if you're abutting up to two and a half acre, that's the minimum. Okay? Or if it's two acre zoning, that's the minimum. So, that was the first thing we did while I was on the council. We also changed the fee structures on, on barn fire fees. We eliminated them on a lot of properties around town. We also have changed the HOA requirements on developments. Unfortunately, we didn't, what's, what's the right way to put it? We didn't have the right policies in place when one of our large subdivisions was built. And the developer who came in said, "You can't breed dogs there." They have restrictions like you would expect over in Weston, to be honest with you. And since then, the council working with the town attorney have evolved that tremendously. You know, if a developer comes in and says, "We don't want anybody to have any goats or any, any livestock," we don't approve their HOA requirements, and they're required to have them these days. You know, if you build a house, you're not required to have an HOA, but when you're a developer and you're going to put in 14, 15, 20, 30, 40 homes, you have to have an HOA, and the HOA governs how that community is, you know, the rules they have to follow, like all HOAs. And, you know, we've taken the, the perspective on, on those types of HOA requirements and documents, that we want them to reflect the rural lifestyle, not some developer who just wants to keep the property values up by not allowing goats, or chickens, or sheep, or what have you, in somebody's backyard. On top of that, what we've also been trying to do on these big site plans, is make sure that there's space on the property for a barn. We want people, now, the person who moves in there today, they may not want a barn, but if, if there's no room on the property because of the way the developer develops it, or the, the person comes in and puts a garage there, they'll never have animals on those properties. And we want to continue to have, allow people to have the opportunity to have animals, or agriculture. I mean, I've got some neighbors that have some massive gardens in their yard, that are all, I'm jealous of right now, because they're all coming into, they're all coming in right now. But, we're, we're trying to look at the HOAs and, and the designs, the site plans, so that we can assure, and Noel's been extremely instrumental in pushing us to make sure that there are places, there's space for animals on these properties. So if they come in and they want to do what they want to do, they're going to do what they want to do if they allow for agricultural, agricultural a barn on their property. And that's the way, we're trying to keep these developers in the rural mindset. Just going on, I've mentioned, we, we put a lot more scrutiny on the site plans for subdivisions, and then also, you heard me mention the dark skies ordinance. The dark skies ordinance, I can't quote it verbatim, but basically, it keeps our town dark, and you'd be able to see the stars in the sky, et cetera, at night. And also, you don't suffer the light abuse from your next door neighbors, because we've had complaints, it goes through code all the time, where somebody puts spotlights on the side of their house, and the guy next door, they're shining it all over his windows. Well, we don't allow that sort of thing, we don't want lights pointed up, you know, we're, we're not too cool on, on streetlights on properties, things like that. Well, the dark skies ordinance was, like most of our ordinances, reactive. Most of our code in Southwest Ranches is reactive. In other words, code enforcement is not going to drive down the street and say, "Oh, problem, 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 problem." That's the way they do it in all the cities around us, we don't work that way. A neighbor has to call, and it might not be the most pleasant thing to do, but if you're really bothered enough by some behavior of your neighbor, that's, that's your recourse, to call code enforcement. We only have a few things where it's proactive. Proactive means code enforcement can drive down the street, and if they see it, they'll investigate, and if it's, if it's breaking our ordinances or our code, they can, they can cite the property. And up until, I think it was last year, our dark skies ordinance was reactive, a neighbor had to call on another neighbor. Well, we've changed that. And we've also provided code enforcement with the right tools, so they can go out there and objectively determine whether they're breaking the dark skies ordinance. So, if code, if somebody complains, or if code is driving down the street, because our code, people think they only work nine to five, Monday through Friday, our code works effectively seven by 24, there's always code enforcement officers available, and they do patrol our town. If they're driving down a street, and they come to a house, usually it's a brand new house, or a brand new, brand new resident there, and that resident's gone and put in a ton of new lights, and they're all pointed out on the street, code can investigate, and they have a, what's the device called? Luminometer, I think it is, that measures the light? And they can measure it from how much is encroaching on the road, other people's property. Might not sound like much, but we had it on my street. The, the neighbors came, they, they moved in from the city, they didn't like the fact that it was dark, they didn't like the fact that out on my street, we don't have any streetlights. They even came to the council meeting and asked if the town could put streetlights on our private road. And, you know, the answer's always going to be no on those sorts of things, we just don't do that in our town. So they went ahead, they brought an electrician in, and the electrician put these super bright lights shining on the road, the length of their property. And, you know, the neighbors all start calling, "Bob, Bob, we have a problem, Bob, we have a problem." Because nobody ever wants to call code. So, you know, I got in touch with code enforcement, and they went out, and basically, all these people had to do was point all these things down, and not out on the road, because when you drove past the house, you had to do this. So, the point is that, you know, is there anything else we can do with dark skies? You know, the, the situation I'm talking about, a lot of these, if you're breaking the, the code, you know, by putting lights all over the place, there are remedies for that. But is there anything else like that that we'd want to do? So those, those are the things we have accomplished over the last couple of years, to try to preserve the lifestyle, to keep things the way they are. If you guys have any ideas, one at a time, come on up to the microphone, and I'd love to hear them, we'd love to hear them, so that we can possibly take some of your ideas and, and move forward with them.
And what I was going to propose to the council is, you know, either in a workshop before a council meeting in the near future, we hash out maybe five or six that we want to address, that we think that we could, you know, enlist the support of the administration, and go ahead and start working through things that we're, we're comfortable supporting.
Okay.
So, the microphone is hot, and it's, there's nobody in line, so if you have some great ideas, we'd love to hear about it, and you're up. And if, if anything I just said you think is a really bad idea, like changing setbacks, happy to hear that, too. I mean, these are people's ideas, I'm, I'm just looking to refine them or throw them out. All right, Ed. Thanks.
Somebody has to be first.
Good evening. My name's Ron Martinez, I'm a resident for over 20 years. Sure, I haven't seen the growth that a lot of the old timers have seen over the years, but I've seen quite a lot of growth. And, um...
Maybe you can lift it up, it's on a flexible arm. There you go.
We, we hear the word rural, but the word rural isn't defined anywhere. To me, rural is peace of mind, that I can go in my yard and not have to hear my neighbors, live on two and a half acres, most of the time, it's peaceful. I know the old mayor used to complain that US 27 made a lot of noise, and then I shouldn't complain about anything. But the truth of the matter is that, as the price of real estate has gone up higher and higher and higher, the complaint from a lot of landscaping companies, that they can't find any place to park their trucks in the city, outside of Southwest Ranches, so they're taking advantage of our large properties to come on here to park their trucks, to do their landscaping business in other parts of Dade County and Brower County. To me, that's a commercial enterprise. That's a business that's bringing in 20 or 30 or 40 workers a day, dropping off their cars on these properties, getting their commercial trucks, and then heading on out to do their jobs. So my, my problem is that, this, you know, over the last, I guess, five years, now I have the right neighbor, neighbor across the street, neighbor up the street, they're all doing these landscaping businesses. Nobody lives on these properties, but they all come there to start, you know, to, to run their businesses. So my question for the council is, we have to define this, so that I, I, as a resident, know if I'm in the wrong, or if I'm right, when I complain to Julio, to say, "This guy is on five acres next to me, I know he paid 1.2 whatever million dollars, but every morning, there's 20 or 30 cars on 210, waiting for the guy to open the gate so they can pull in." So as I pull out, I have to wait for these cars, or weave through them, to be able to go to work on a daily basis. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But if these are commercial enterprises, how are they next to a residential agricultural area? And, and this has been going on for years. And my question is, I mean, we have to define it as a community, so whether I'm wrong and I have to move, or they're wrong and they have to move. Because, I mean, I like to know my neighbors, I talk to a lot of my neighbors all the time. But, I don't know who these people are, half the time who are coming in there, and the, you know, they'll park in front of my house while they're waiting for the gate to open, they're out there cursing, laughing, you know, playing music. I mean, that's not why I live in Southwest Ranches. I'm, I'm here for the peace of mind. And this happens on a daily basis, I'm trimming the bushes, I walk up and there's a guy under my tree in my front yard, I'm like, "Whoa, whoa." He goes, "Oh, I'm taking a break." My friend, you work across the street, take a break over there, you don't have to be taking a break over here, dropping paper wrappers when they're having their lunch under my trees." So this is, this, you know, this, this is something that's been going on for years. I complained to Julio, I know Julio had a, a case against the neighbors on the right-hand side, and that's still ongoing, they're, they're selling the property, but it's still not resolved. So I just, you know, I just want some clarification from the town. What is residential, what's agricultural, what's commercial? And, you know, I've, I think I've told Steve before, I mean, if I have to go commercial, I'll go commercial. If they're going to say that everything else is going to be commercial, as it's blowing up right now with Burdron building all his warehouses, and, and all his other stuff that's going on out there, I mean, if that's what happens, that's what happens. I guess, that was up. And I also, off topic, I've always wanted to see, because we always talk about rural and everybody horseback riding, but there isn't a real defined trail other than, that I've seen, than Griffin Road, and, which is a danger to the horses and to the riders. So I've always thought that maybe at the town, Sterling Road isn't built all the way out west, or all the way out east, but it sort of will lead you to, I think, the three or the four major parks. If we could somehow develop that as a non-commercial vehicle roadway, or not, not motorized roadway, but a way for people to ride their horses down Sterling, maybe go to the Equestrian Park and, you know, have more access. And define it more as, you know, because, to me, rural and the horseback riding and everything else is what Southwest Ranches is all about. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Neil Hollingsworth, I'll get on my soapbox again. What Mr. Martinez was saying is, one, the first part of the problem is a continuing problem in our town. And it's basically like the one that was in Rolling Oaks, where you have a large line of cars in the morning going through. I've seen it once, but it's the first time that I've heard someone other than me take a look at it and say, "Yeah, there's something there." But, you know, the neighbor's got to say it. It's, so my neighbor has said it. So I'd like for the council to please take a look at that. Is it similar to what was happening in, oh, Rolling Oaks? The second part, about the trails, we have, year after year, it's in the comprehensive plan, there's supposed to be a trail through the middle of town. And the Parks Department is supposed to have been done, it's been on my orphan list for quite a number of years, the trail through the center of town. Whether, and it hasn't been finished. So that's up to the Parks Department, Parks Board. Now as to putting signs on the, the trail, that's another thing, you know, that needs to be taken, what we're going to do there. The other thing is the Griffin Road Trail. Because we have the guard rail, it's not that dangerous, it's part, the main thing is the crossing of the road. And out, out west by 210, and by the dam, 205, we don't have the flashing lights there. They got so far, and then, they didn't finish it. So we need to have those flashing lights. There's also the two bridges that are going to go across right there. Whenever the, supposedly, it was supposed to start this year, 2020, last year, 2022, and build that impoundment area, it was supposed to have two bridges across the C11 for equestrians. So we could use the north side of the C11, which would be a lot safer. But that didn't happen, I asked on the orphan list for the council to take a look and see where that is, and where it's going, if it's ever going to start. So, these are all things I think that guarantee the ruralness of our town. But I've taken a look at what's happened to other areas, and this is the soapbox part, that I've always said, if we can guarantee the equestrian community, then our town will be here. We will maintain our rural lifestyle, and everyone else that wants to have chickens and goats, and anything else of the farm animals, will be able to have it. be able to have them. Because the most expensive animal to keep is a horse. And as long as that equestrian community is taken care of, we will have the ability and maintain the ability for everyone else in town to have their other farm items. And so we need to have a space for, where they can have a barn for the equestrian community. Cause having a chicken coop barn is, I have a very large one on my, my property. I always called it the Taj Mahal of chicken coops, considering it has a wrought iron door on it. So anyway, but take a look. If you take care of the most expensive animal we got to keep in this town and the equestrian community, you will see that everything else falls in place to be able to keep that. And, uh, so that's why my wife started the Fun Horse Show so many years ago. And it's going to be, it's going to be back this year in February, which is good to see it back. And those items have to be part of our town in order to guarantee that you can have the chickens, Bob, and someone else can have the goats and the sheep and the other animals, minus the coyotes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Thanks for coming tonight, Will.
I'm Lil Sayar. I wanted to comment on your thoughts about having further setbacks in the front. That might actually make it look nice and, and rural in the front, but that's going to provide less room in the back for people to have their animals. Um, so I think that's something that maybe we should consider because we, we do want to be able to have the space for the animals and they need pasture area. And most people really don't like to have their animals up in front.
Thank you, Will.
Hi, my name's Kay Taylor. And first off, I just wanted to thank you all for, I know in the newsletter, I do read that all the time. I, this is my first meeting, but in the newsletter, um, I do read that and I think it's a great way to communicate with our residents. Um, I know you all did, um, address the problems of the noise a few months ago or so and the B and Bs. And I appreciate that because something was happening in my neighborhood and I had no idea, but there were all these parties going on all of a sudden every weekend and, and I, it was, it was deafening. So, um, that has stopped and I appreciate that. Uh, the other thing is a big thing for me is the light pollution that we are experiencing more and more. And I don't really have any ideas except that maybe once again by the newsletter, it's not just the light pollution, but what is it doing to our critters? You mentioned I have chickens also and what I do is I have a security light down in my chicken pen. And every once in a while it will go off and that's fine. I, I look at with my binoculars and I see what critter is out there at two o'clock in the morning. Um, there used to be a lot more critters than there are now, which is kind of a shame because we are responsible for keeping our chickens safe, but I still like to see the critters running around. And they are part of our ecosystem that do need to be protected. Our owls need to be protected because they hunt the rats at night and our, um, raccoons and opossums and even dare I say the coyotes are part of our ecosystem, even though they are quote, um, an invasive exotic to our Florida, um, environment. But anyway, so I, I think that the light pollution is a biggie and I really think that, um, maybe we could just utilize the newsletter to go a little more in depth as to give these people, everybody's about global warming and everything, but if you don't plant the right plants to protect, you know, to bring in pollinators, et cetera, it's not just a one-sided thing. And I think if we go a little more in depth about what we, what this really means, it's not just that it's disturbing your neighbors, but it's actually having an impact on the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Joseph Altschul, 164th Terrace, Green Meadows. Uh, I think I want to echo a little bit of what Mr. Martinez was talking about earlier. What I really see is an issue in, in my area is primarily one acre lots. And what I really see as an issue is the industrialization of our area. Um, you know, in the last couple of years, really since 2020, as the real estate market has gone up, as houses have sold, I'm seeing property after property that is now running trucking businesses and appliance businesses, uh, from their properties. And you know, I look at the property that's immediately across the street from me and, you know, there's 18-wheelers coming and going and it's on a small street. We're talking, you know, 51st Manor is a very small street. You know, 18-wheelers coming in, they, they generally have to pull onto my yard in order to navigate their way into, into the yard. And you're talking about a backyard that has, has no green in it. I mean, it's all gravel. It's all been, been, uh, put, you know, put down and, and turned into a shop. And so at all hours of the night, you hear, you know, clanking and, and, and if this, this isn't just a one-off, you know, it, it's probably three on my street that I've seen in the last couple of years and, um, or three or four. And, you know, as people come, they see Southwest Ranches as an opportunity where they can park their trucks. You know, they can, you know, you know, with our reactive code enforcement, you know, it's paradise for them. And I never thought I would be the one up here complaining about this, but I really think that we ought to consider being more proactive and less reactive on code enforcement on a lot of different areas. You know, for example, uh, you know, the, the people who are running trucking yards, I shouldn't have to complain. And, you know, there should, if, if the code doesn't permit those kinds of uses, then code enforcement should enforce it without me having to get into feuds with my neighbors. And, you know, I say I'm surprised that I'm the one up here complaining about it, you know, you know, having, I've been here 18 years, uh, and part of what attracted me to the ranches was not being proactive, being reactive, but, but really having the idea that, okay, you know, here we have our little piece of, of rural life in South Florida. You know, like many of you, you know, we have goats and we have chickens and geese and, and other animals. And, and to me, that's just not compatible with the uses that we're seeing on our property. And that's not to mention the wear and tear that these trucks are putting on the street as they come down. And, I mean, we have enough problems on our street from, from the last project that was done, uh, that, that have never really been corrected sufficiently. But, you know, having these trucks drive up and down, they're essentially tearing up the streets. And, you know, those businesses that are running out of those properties are not, you know, paying a heavier tax burden for it. Uh, you know, it, it's going to fall on all of us. And so I think if, if we're going to be serious about being rural, I think that's got to include not allowing our town to become industrialized. And I think the only way that we can do that is to be more proactive in our code enforcement and decide, are we going to have this or not? And, and I kind of, you know, feel like Mr. Martinez. You know what? Maybe it's time for me to go. You know, this isn't what I signed on for. You know, I, we didn't build over the last 18 years to live next to a truck yard, you know, or to live next to an appliance shop. It, it's just, it, it's not what, what we see the ranches as and we, and we never did. And, and so I find myself scratching my head recently is a time to go. You know, is a time to pack up and go north, you know? And, and I hope the answer is no. But as I see this continuing and nothing, uh, nothing in place to stop it, you know, I, I'm not liking where the answer is pushing. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Michael Fokachewski. I think in your definition of rural, the, it's simplistic, but you should include good neighborly. Um, because as long as you live in harmony with your neighbors, allowing them to do what they do and you do what you do and nobody's bothering anybody, I think that's a, that's a great inclusion for what should be your, part of your definition of rural. And, uh, just to say, not all developers are bad. I know you've had some bad ones here before. Not all developers are bad. We this week put down a hundred mature trees down on the property and on the 44 acres that we have, we're going to have 16 families, period. So re good, responsible neighbors that we intend to be and we follow all your HOA rules and the horse, the, the animals are allowed. Whether somebody chooses to have them or not, that's not, that's their decision. Uh, everybody's allowed to have it and it's all permissible and just be good neighbors and everybody will get along fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Evening. Kirk Opsen Garcia, 16201, Sterling Road. Rural, if you live in a rural area, you want your government to be small. You don't want it to be involved in your day-to-day life. You don't want them to come in and look for trouble where there may not be none or where there may be small trouble. I know two of my neighbors want more government because they are, because their way of life is going to, is being affected. Me, I am, I am on an acre and I'm fortunate that my neighbors don't do anything that I don't mind too much. I have one neighbor to my east and she has an eight acre property and she's been there, you know, since the starting. And she does, uh, you know, uh, and she has cows and tractors and all different types of equipment. But when I bought my property, I knew that is what I was buying into. I knew that I was buying into an area where people are going to have businesses, like landscape businesses. They may have on construction, but that was a choice that I made when I buy here. When something happens and it affects my life, I can leave or I could live, I could, um, live with it and then make, you know, um, changes in my expectation. Um, people who don't know me, I have a stutter. So I, so I ought to just bear with me. I, I am going to say what I have to say. Eventually it will come out. Um, so, um, so please don't expand. Do not increase code enforcement and also, um, look at how code enforcement and the city interacts with its, um, residents. I think the government should be always trying to de-escalate something that has happened. They should not, um, look for teaching that resident a, um, a, um, lesson. Um, you know, I believe that we should be always trying to, um, see it through the, um, um, residents' eye, but sometimes educate the resident, but still try to de-escalate anything that is happening or that has been brought to them, you know? And again, thank you for your time and thank you for the work that you all are doing up there.
Thank you, Kirk.
Can you hear me? Good evening. How you doing? John Garrati, 162nd Avenue, Rolling Meadows. Um, I'm not going to be so nice. I'm going to be honest. Um, code enforcement is a thing that you can't use it as a policing tool in a community. A lot of you council members, and I'm not going to mention names, you guys use it as a tool and that's just not necessary. It's, it's, it's something to, to maintain the town, obviously, to not have lawbreakers of any kind. But you know what? You live, I've been out, living out here 21 years and I know what happens on the inner workings of this town and a lot of it is not cool. It's just not. You guys know who are the complainers. We have a code enforcement problem on our street that is rampant. Not a resident, we have code enforcement, how can I explain this to you guys? We have people that jump on their bicycles and go around the block and they just use it as a tool to harass. So that's not what code enforcement is for. I can relate with some of the stuff that the guys are saying here where who wants tractor trailers in and out, but I'm going to say something. You guys are to blame for some of this. I'm going to tell you why. A year and a half ago, there was a home-based business law that was passed that some of you guys are pretty keen on the case that I have. That was all resolved because at the end of the day, I got my home-based business license. I'm allowed to do what I do, but I had to go through a war. Nobody, nobody was listening to me until I got it. Cost me a ton of money, but I got it. So my point here is a little bit of communication to a new resident. Hey guys, you can do this. Hey guys, you can't do this. Communicate with your neighbors. The other day, a councilman on our homeowners association, and I'm not going to mention names because people know who they are and what they do. They use the Davy Police Crime App to complain about a party. Wait a second. I think the police have a lot better things to do than to go see about a party. Cause if I'm on a council and I see a party, I'm going to introduce myself. Hey, you know what? I'm X, Y, and Z. I kind of manage the town a little bit with the other crew here and why don't you, um, hey, you know, you can't do that. Let me introduce myself. You know, that's called being neighbor. We're in a country setting. I'll be quick. The bottom line is you can't use code enforcement as a policing tool just because, oh, I know this council member, this is reactive and this is proactive. So let's get it with this. Cause I don't want to, I want to stay anonymous. You guys know who you are. You guys know exactly what you've done. There's lawsuits on the books of people running businesses out of town. So if there's a law on the state of Florida's books that is not on our books yet, and Steve, I've sent you text messages about it. We haven't had any conversation about it, but some of these residents don't know that you can actually have a home-based business in your business as long as you follow certain rules. You can't get crazy, but if it follows the character of the town, it's completely legal. How did I find this out? Cost me about 40 grand with a war with the town for no reason. Because if there would have been some communication to you guys of what Tallahassee passed, it would have been on the business use application, but it wasn't. And I have a whole laundry list of stuff here, but it's, it's kind of the same. Anna wasn't able to be here tonight, which is Kirk's wife. She's the, um, Green Meadows Homeowners Association President. It's basically the same thing. Communicate with your neighbors. I have a brand new neighbor. I talked to him, dude, you can do this. You can do that. Don't do this. If you have any questions, call me. Why sick the police on them? Why code enforcement? Why, why get Keith Poliakoff to go grind them into paying fines? There's no need for that. Communication is key. That's all I really got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, as you're on guys, this is the first time here. My name is Richard Rojo. I am from 166 in Green Meadows. So I was just kind of listening to everybody and I think the spirit of everybody, what they're saying, I have a little bit of everything, right? I have a, I have a little bit of sentiment of, of what everybody is saying, but I just wanted to start really quick with the definition of rural because we keep on saying, what is rural? The definition of rural according to Miriam is off relating to the country, country, people, or life, or agricultural. I'll be honest, I came here to Southwest Ranches because I wanted to have, I think the two gentlemen said, I, I used to live in Weston. I hated it. I hated it because it was all about the government. It was all about, you know, rules and this. I just wanted, as long as you're civil and you are polite and you're, and you're a good citizen, I just want to be left alone. So for me, it is super important to have government small as possible if you want to live in a rural lifestyle. However, I do hear the two other gentlemen that talked about, you know, nuisance. Yeah. If I had a truck company that was coming in and out next to my, my, my house, I'd be pissed off. So there has to be a balance. And I think the balance is exactly what I think this gentleman said, that is it a commercial? Well, the definition of rural does not include commercial. It includes agricultural and you can certainly have big trucks and I don't have a problem if you have, if you are, if you're farming and if you're, and you need that for your, for your, for your farm and you, and for your animals, great. you, and for your animals, great, do it, have fun, have fun out it. But if it's something that it's, that it's destroying the peace of our, of our, of our town, I'm not, I'm not for that. But I think we need to be able to be careful with that. I, I, I don't think we need to start going crazy with enforcement all over the place. I'll be very, there's certainly gonna be time for that, but I'll be very reluctant to be in a town that is supposed to be considered rural, and we're just enforcement, code enforcement all over the place. I'll, I'll be leaving. Do I have a few more seconds? Thank you. And I wanted just to add a couple more things, and the first thing I, I said, and I think it's probably, goes without saying, anything that restricts us to be able to have animals, farm animals, to be more specific, in our country, in our county, or, excuse me, town, we probably should not advocate for that. I wanna, I came here because I wanna be able to have animals. I also have chickens and little ducks and stuff like that, and I love it. Population is a huge concern of mine, if you're rural, to have an increase in density in population is antithetical of the definition of rural. So I'm so glad you, I didn't know that you guys had an ordinance about the, the restriction of acreage. That's awesome, I love that, because I wanna be able to, if you have a two-acre, I don't wanna be able to, you know, have people behind me that are one acre each. And I'm, I'm usually, for the most part, I tend to just be, you do your thing, I'll do my thing, and that's all there is to it. But I'm glad that it's, we wanna be able to foster a location where we are not, where we're not increasing the density of population. And the last thing, and I thank you so much for giving me the extra time, speed. I live right off of Griffin. Just a few days ago, I, I, I'm pretty sure you guys have heard or have heard it by now, there was somebody that was doing wheelies in...
Drifting.
Yeah. I, I could have sworn that I, that somebody was right in front of my house, and I went outside, and I was about to go outside, I'm like, what is going on with this? And so, speed is a huge issue, I don't know if we need speed bumps, I know some areas have speed bumps, I don't know if that's a solution or not, but that Griffin, I mean, it's like a speedway. We need to try to see if there's a way that we can diminuate that speed issue. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Who hasn't spoken? Who's got some good ideas here? We're hearing some good stuff, a lot of live and let live, but who's got some additional ideas? I see three of you guys back there, are you here for a Boy Scout project? You guys, you guys can speak as well, we like Boy Scouts. Come on up, John. Come on up, John.
Yeah. We heard it.
How about, since we have that home-based business law on the books, you guys have a bunch of advisory boards, sorry, can you hear me? Since we have that home-based business law on the books, and nobody really knows what you can and can't do, because there's no communication, what about an advisory board for small business? The Southwest Ranches Small Business Advisory Team, let's say, you get together, and you'll have neighbors that'll approach it, hey, you can do this. No, you can't open up a strip club. No, you can't do a restaurant. No, you can't have fifteen tractor-trailers. You can do small engine repair in your garage, as long as you don't have fifteen customers waiting. So, back to the communication, if we have, you got an advisory board for drainage, great. You got an advisory board for parks and recreation, fantastic. A lot of the culture that's moved into this town are self-employed. They run their own businesses, and since they have such a big property, they use and abuse, because there's no set guidelines. On the business license application, it says, we don't have a commercial, anything, because we don't have the room for it. It's time to do it, because you got a law on the books that says you can work from home, so let's distribute that information to the public, so that I don't have to be the only one that has to tell people what you can and cannot do. It's just communication. A small business council, something, so that the guy doesn't just get crazy and do what these guys are complaining about. I don't want a guy with fifteen tractor-trailers, but if you don't announce it, how's the guy gonna know what he can and cannot do, especially new move-ins from Miami, that the Redlands and all sorts of other areas, they allow anything. So they're used to that, they're, oh, it's the same thing, it's, it's Florida. But that's what would be effective to me, you know, some little, I kinda voice it a little bit in the association that we're in, never thought I'd be in a homeowners association, I'm getting old, that's the bottom line, but communicate with an advisory board, that's, if you got all kinds of advisory boards, a little small business something, it'll guide these guys on what not to do. Just my two cents.
Thank you.
It wasn't too angry, right?
Ryan, you can speak twice, this is a council meeting.
Steve was mentioning yesterday about a set of guidelines, a guidance that you would provide to certain parties. Realtors, realtors like to just say, oh, you can come out here and do whatever you wanna do, and that's what happened next to me. They never tell them, this is agricultural, residential, not for you to come in and bring, you know, fifty trucks and a couple hundred guys, and another thing that gets me from that perspective is that my neighbor doesn't live there. The guy across the street doesn't live there. The guy up the street doesn't live there. They just come there to start, run their business, and at the end of the day, most of the time, not even there. So all the yelling, all the noise, they don't hear it, they're not there, they're in their Weston home, living the dream, while I have to put up with all the stuff that goes on. And so, if they have a vested interest, like I as a homeowner have a vested interest, I'm, I'm sure they would take more care of what their guys are doing to our semi-private road and everything else, because you have a vested interest in the community, your real estate value goes up. To them, it doesn't matter, it's a warehouse that they use to store their products and run their business out of. They don't have the same vested interest as a regular homeowner. So when you're running a, a home business, you have a vested interest, that's your home, and it's your business. But what worse, what I'm seeing on my street in particular is, people who don't live there, yet they run the business out of that, out of that property. Up the street, we have a warehouse, like, I don't know how many thousand square feet, it's a humongous warehouse, and they're building commercial products in that warehouse on two and a half acres, surrounded by coconut trees, so they're agriculture, I think they even probably have agricultural exemption, because they're coconut trees, but they're running a commercial enterprise on that street, you know, in a commercial warehouse. So that's my thing, too, I mean, they don't have a vested interest, they don't care what goes on, whether guys are throwing trash on the street, or sleeping in their cars, or whatever, they, they, they're not there. It's a commercial business, and that's my whole thing, but like, I agree with him, I mean, we're Americans, we, we, these are our properties, if you wanna run a truck or run my home business, I'm allowed to do that. I just feel that if you're not on that property, there's no residential code, it's just a blank piece of land, and you're doing these things to hamper your neighbors who actually live there, that's where I have my problems, so that's my other two cents.
Thanks, Brian. Any other ideas, folks? Any other good ideas? Any other ideas in general?
I think the general consensus is a balance, right? You're not gonna be able to find a way to be rural and be entrepreneurial if you don't have a balance. So, I, I think that balance, I would love to see if it can be defined. In my mind, I know what I would love to do, and what a balance means to me. And the balance has to include low or, or small government, but restriction like that. I mean, if, if there's a gentleman or, or property that has nobody living there, and they're running their business from there, no, that's not, I, I don't, in my mind, that's not acceptable, and while I'm generally just, hey, it's your property, you can do whatever you want, yes, it's your property, you can do whatever you want, in certain locations, right? I think for here, we have, I think, a beautiful, harmonious place that we live in, where we find the rural lifestyle, but with a comfort of the city, if you will. And I love that, I love that we are able to do that, and I think we should be able to foster that a little bit more. So I think finding that balance, I think if we can do that, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you again, Richard. More good ideas, Noel?
More of thoughts on what's been said. When we have, right now, where if you have, live on the property, you're allowed to bring your business home. Also, if you have agricultural classification, you're allowed to do agricultural business on your property. What we're having, it appears, is that someone's building, has built a business that is not agricultural, in the middle of an agricultural piece of property, and is flaunting the laws of our town. At least that's the picture I got. Also, that they're renting space on some of these properties, similar to what was happening in, in Rolling Oaks, and that needs to be addressed. It's not that we don't have the means of enforcement, it's that we've had the lack of knowledge to make the enforcement possible. And that's where the resident comes in. If they're not willing to call someone and put it in motion, then we can't do anything about it, because we don't know, the town doesn't know, and code enforcement doesn't know, and engineering doesn't know. What we have to look at is, how do we get enforcement without causing a civil war on various different streets? That's one of the things. And the state has basically hampered that somewhat, through their, through their laws. What we also need to take a look at is when someone purchases, and you've already started this process with this flyer that you're going to put up, of what the rules of town are. When someone buys a piece of property and says, I want it to use it for X, Y, Z, which is not agricultural, we need to be able to tell them, sorry, you can't do that. And also, these pieces of property, we don't know, from Marty Kiarr, where the agricultural classification actually is on that piece of property. I have heard that I got agricultural classification on my piece of property, my two and a half acres. And he's a beekeeper, and he only has about four hundred square feet, which is agricultural classification. Yet he has built these monstrous storage buildings without permits, because he has agricultural classifications. Well, that is not correct. So, we don't know where the agricultural classification is zoning, our zoning doesn't know, our code enforcement doesn't know, and we need to get those information, that's a piece of information that we're lacking from Marty Kiarr's office. And if we can get that, then they can look and go, you cannot build on this. If you wanna build on agricultural classification, it has to be an agricultural building for agricultural purposes. It can't be the four hundred square feet of beekeeping, and you've got six thousand square feet of storage containers here. So, that's, one of the things that we need to do, is be able to define where the agricultural classification is, and what type of classification it is, so we can go forward, and also be able to take care of some of these other problems that are taking place, similar to what happened in Rolling Oaks. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I don't have any of the great ideas these other guys do about your town, but I did wanna take the opportunity as the scout master for Troop Two-Two-Four to thank you guys for all that you've done and all the support the council has had for our troop. So, thank you all very much.
Happy to help. Alrighty. Any more comments? Going once. I think almost everybody's spoken, so it's fantastic. Debbie, no comments? You're the only one who has...
I think they said it all.
Okay.
I kind of, I don't have anything more to add.
Fair enough.
In regards to if people have...
Come closer to the mic.
If there is agriculture going on, or the farm animals and all the animals, that, that people actually, the resident, the owner actually lives at that property, because you don't, because then it possibly does become a nuisance for your neighbors around if you just drop, you know, leave animals, or you just leave equipment, or whatever else you're doing, because it's not affecting you, because you don't live there. So I know there's, you know, properties around, as, you know, other people have said, where the actual mailing address is in Weston.
Right.
So do people actually live there? But I just think, I think a lot of, all the ideas and comments that have been brought forward, I don't know.
Good. Thank you, Debbie. All right, anything else, folks? This has been helpful.
Yeah. I have a few comments, I don't know if...
Please.
You want me to say them now, or...
Absolutely.
Okay. I just really appreciate everybody coming out and being so open with the ideas. It was interesting to hear the variety of ideas, really, some that were, you know, different views on, on the same type of item, so it was interesting. I think it gives you an idea of the challenge of trying to come up with something that will work for everybody, because there is a wide variety, and Bob, I, I appreciate you doing this, because it really brings out the challenge that we have. I think one of the things with reactive code is the attempt to do that balance, Richard, that you were talking about, that here is the rules, but we're not going to be a Weston or Pembroke Pines, where we're spying on our neighbors and forcing it, but the rules are there. I will tell you that that is something that me personally, as a resident, not as the mayor, but as a resident of this town, it's something I've struggled with, because the logic in my brain says that if an ordinance makes sense for our town, it should be enforced across our town, you know? And if it doesn't make sense, if it's, you know, your, your house needs to be painted a certain color, or your roof is, has a little bit too much mold on it, and therefore you need to pressure-clean it, and all those kinds of things, which I personally think is a bunch of garbage, you know, those kinds of things, if we had, we don't have those rules in our town, we don't have those ordinances in our town, but if we did, then it's up to us as a council to get rid of them, because they make no sense. So, but those ordinances that we have in town seems like they should be applied to everybody, but that's me as a resident. You know, I understand that then those kinds of things can be weaponized, and, and can be real problems, too. And so I think the reactive, although I, I kinda lean more towards the proactive, to be honest with you, but I think the reactive is that balance, it's an element of that attempt to have that balance there, where we do have the right ordinances, but we're not, you know, we don't have Big Brother looking, looking over your property, telling you what to do. A few other comments, the landscaping businesses, those are illegal, I just wanna be clear about that. Those, there's, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, those are illegal in our town, and, and they have, that, that's, that's a business in a commercial, in a residential area, and it flat-out is illegal and, and reported to code. It takes a long time, it takes a long time, I'm not saying you report it to code, and thirty days later, it's all cleaned up, it's gone, but it is definitely illegal, and it definitely, over time, can be taken care of, we've seen that happen throughout town. But it, but it's tough, it, I mean, it, it takes time. The, you know, the, the commercial trucks, I, I totally, Joseph, I get what you're saying there. I, I feel fortunate, in a way. I have a neighbor that has a land-moving type business, and has large trucks that start up at usually five-thirty in the morning, and, and I hear them many a morning, or, or he's moving them around, and at five-thirty, I hear the beep, 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 as he's backing them up and moving them around and moving them. So I, I get what you're saying, but I say that I'm fortunate, because I've talked to him, he's a good guy, I've talked to him, and, and, and he has done his very best to minimize that, and to try and, and avoid that as much as possible. It still happens, but, you know, he's, he's a reasonable guy, I don't, I don't know nothing about the situation you're talking about. Maybe he's a reasonable guy, and there's something can be done there, maybe he's not a reasonable guy, and there's nothing that can be done there, other than, you know, bringing code to play. But I go back to the comment that was said, that a lot of it comes down to communication, and there's a lot of different ways of communicating. Believe me, and as a matter of fact, and it's already written, it's already submitted, so I'm not writing it based on what we, what was heard tonight, but communication is a big deal, and my February newsletter, when you read it, is going to be all about communication. And the frustrating part that it is for us as, as a town, because we, we put out the newsletter, I was so thrilled... newsletter, I was so thrilled to hear you say that you read the newsletter, cover to cover. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All of our hard work. Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Um, because we have the newsletter, we have the, the emails that go out there. Please, I hope, if you're not signed up for the emails, you can go right on the website, sign up for the emails. It's a great method of communication to the residents. Um, we have the, the signs out by the road that we try and communicate to folks. We have, you know, different meetings. We, we, as the council, go to pretty much all the HOA meetings and, and try and communicate. So we are, we're honestly trying every possible way that we can try, and we're willing to try new ideas, you know, we appreciate the new ideas, because it's a big problem. It's a big deal. Communication and a lack of it is a big deal. But, uh, trust me when I say that, uh, this council is trying to do every possible thing that they can do to communicate with you in every way possible. Um, because it is key. It is so important. And, um, and getting that letter out, you know, we're developing this letter for new residents, realtors, um, commercial businesses, things like that, so that they will know, coming in, what the rules are, and there's no surprise. There's, there's a piece of property, Bob, I think at the end of your road, where an individual bought it, and they had a great plan for what they were gonna do there, only to find out it was totally illegal, and they bought the property, and we'll see what they end up doing with it. But, uh, you know-
For sale.
Yeah, it's for sale. They didn't, you know, they, they didn't do their due diligence, they bought a piece of property there, and, and what they wanted to do is, is absolutely illegal. So, um, so I say this all to say, the communication is important, because a lot of the things that I heard tonight are already illegal. They're already been covered by this council and prior councils, understanding that they are not what this town is all about. And, um, and, and I'm not saying that it's perfect. Uh, Joseph, I'd like to know a little bit more about what's going there, whether it fits within the rules or within, without the rules. You know, you know, a plumber that drives their own truck home every night is, is, is within the rules. It's specifically allowed. Um, a, a plumber that has their employees, five or six employees, come to their house and pick up vehicles and drive out for that, that is totally illegal. That's not allowed. So, so it, it, it does come down to, to the elements of how it's, of how it's working. Um, Airbnbs are, are governed by the state of Florida, and they are specifically allowed. Um, there's nothing that the town can do for Airbnbs, technically. However, an Airbnb often will break other ordinances of our town, and we can, frankly, we can make their lives miserable when they step outside the ra, outside the bounds, you know? We can apply the laws that are already on the books. I am thrilled, because on my street, there was an Airbnb that had been there for over a decade, that sold last month because of their large, you know, they had parties, so they got, um, they got in trouble for the noise, for underage drinking, for all kinds of things. And finally, the fines accumulated into the fives, tens, thousands of dollars, and they said, "That's enough." And so they sold it, and they're gone. Um, so, so it's not that we can't do anything, but we cannot just say, "Hey, it's an Airbnb, you gotta go away." Um, so, so it, it, you know, I would encourage more communication. There are, there are things that we can do in, in certain situations, um, and, um, and we heard a lot, a lot, a lot more good things tonight, so appreciate it. I think that's, I think that's all I got.
I think that's a good summary. Thank you. Um, folks, we're going to, uh, have a, a, another meeting. I'm not sure if it's gonna be a workshop, or it'll be a portion of one of our upcoming council meetings, for us to go over the ideas you have and anything that we've got as well. Pick kind of a top five or six that we can address over the next year, and then keep working the process. So, thank you for helping us get it started. This is all good stuff. I mean, I didn't expect to be talking code as much as we did tonight, but you know what? It's all part of the lifestyle.